Twenty-four board meeting of the Richland Blossom, Blossom Punity School Corporation order. Mr. Tucker, are you ready? Okay. We, the roll call would be the same as it was with the Board of Finance with Mr. Tucker, Mr. Durnall, Mr. Moss, and Mr. Kerr present. And again, Mrs. Jacobs was unable to be here due to circumstances outside of her control. Are there any visitors to this meeting? Nope. Moving forward, the must-hang moment, given the fact that today was out of school, the kids were out of school, that has been postponed likely to our next, till February. So then, our next item would be the consent agenda, and we have approval of the minutes for the December eighteenth regular board meeting. For financial, we have the treasurer's report for December of 2023. And Mr. Durnall, the claims, please.
Mr. President, gross wages for December eighth, 2023 is $882,150.73. Gross wages for twelve fifteen, 2023 is $93,627. For gross wages on December twenty-second, 2023, $803,922.14. For gross wages grand total, $1,779,699.87. Vouchers, claims prepaid for twelve one twenty-three through twelve thirty-one twenty-three Claims or regular vouchers for January the sixteenth, 2024, $372,666.66. For total vouchers of $5,092,833.58. For total vouchers and payroll of $6,872,533.45. Thank you, Mr. President.
We also have personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations, C one through six, and D personnel appointments and transfers, D one through ten. There also are two out-of-state and overnight field trips. First is that the junior high accelerated band and jazz band and the junior high show choirs will be going to Kings Island in Cincinnati, Ohio. And also, the junior high show choirs will be traveling to Fairfield High School in Cincinnati, Ohio as well. Let's see. And, go ahead.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Luden seconded. Any questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. The next item, before we get to that, I did want to welcome Allison Weber. She's the attorney with Ferguson Law, and she's with us this evening, so we appreciate her being here for looking out after us, so we appreciate that. So the Assistant Superintendent's report is next, so Mr. Darwin, turn it over to you.
A quick update on our seventeen eighty-two notice. We did have the DLGF make those adjustments to our debt service levy that I recommended, which means that our 2024 total tax rate will be a dollar five, which is down two cents from last year, so the budget orders did go out. So just wanted to confirm that piece with you guys as well, as far as that was the goal of the board, and so we were able to achieve that, and that budget order has gone out for the year 2024. Running through the cash flows, you have two different sets there, and I'm going to run you through some highlights on a couple of these pieces. Education fund in 2023 closed out above expectations from what I showed you last month. That was due to interest on investments remaining high, and our Hoosier Hills bill was a little lower than the past. We have a few less students go in there this year than last year, and then as well as just some changes with the way that they were invoicing that. So that increased that year-end cash balance a little higher than what we had shown you last month. Again, it's, we're doing great. We encumbered a little over $600,000 into the 2024 budget just to provide extra cushion and appropriation. I don't necessarily think that that was a must, but it just allows us that cushion to not have to come back to do an additional appropriation later in 2024 should there be, you know, if we're to run a little bit closer. So that just provides us that. I did write you a little bit longer piece on debt service. I thought it was, there's some explaining on some of these pieces in the weeds. We ended the year within appropriation, and we did receive the December settlement of property taxes. We collected about ninety-nine percent of our December settlement on that. If you compare that to the abstract levy, I had told you a few months back, kind of going back through, when the circuit breaker report came out, the abstract levy was a couple hundred thousand dollars lower than what the certified levy was. And so there was some confusion working through that with the DLGF as opposed to what was expected in the debt service fund, as to whether or not it went off of the abstract levy or the certified levy. And it does indeed go by the abstract levy, so because our abstract levy was lower, which is a rare occurrence, we did collect less. So this was a difference of about $300,000 in our debt service fund per year-end cash balance. It's not anything that is going to affect us negatively in 2024. We'll manage through it and we'll be fine, but again, it's one of those things that it's completely out of our control. That's not something that we can control when it comes to that. So it's just something that, again, as we work through this, it's just another thing that we'll factor into that as we make decisions with, you know, our debt service budget and kind of working through things as we plan with the board and using Stiefel to just keep that in the fold as we make decisions. So that was the difference in that. So we did do the, we paid back the TAW and the GO bond dollars that, that payments that were due in the end of December, and then we did take the TAW for the start of 2024. By the time that we turned in our TAW information, that was prior to us seeing the Form 22 for December settlement, which meant that we took a smaller TAW than probably what we would have taken should we have known that the December settlement would have been higher. So when you look at the 2024 debt service cash flows, you'll see a negative account balance for those six, about six months in 2024. It's not anything that's going to affect us negatively because our cash balances and the other funds offset that, so it has no real effect on us in this place, but it's just something that I wanted to kind of explain through because as you would pay attention and look at those items when I send those to you, I wanted to point some of that stuff out to kind of explain why that was like that and kind of what it is and how it might affect us. So there is no real true effect on us financially as far as us making payments on anything or anything else like that, but I wanted to give you a quick update on that piece. Operations fund, we ended the end of the year slightly up from our year-end cash balance a year ago. Wasn't a whole lot higher in comparable size as far as the size of the budget, but it was up, so that's a good thing. We're in a really solid position in the operations fund, especially as we look into, kind of looking at 2024, we know that utility costs are going to go up, we know that our insurance premiums are going to go up, and we know that we, and across those funds with education and operations, you know, the board approved pay increases across the board for staff, and so those things are factored in when you look at the 2024 projections and cash flow. That show relatively stable, and right now, like we typically do, we'll kind of hone those in as the year goes on, as kind of those variables come in, like ADM, the tuition support grants, as those count dates happen and reconciliations happen and all of that stuff, which obviously pay a huge factor into our funding as opposed to just trying to give you something that, you know, I know is going to move throughout the year. So you guys will see those and continue to see them every month and see those explanations of how those move around. So that's a shortened version, but you did see a much longer email that came to you with those cash flows, and should you have any other questions about that, please let me know. I'd be happy, happy to talk with you about it.
Any questions? Next is the update on the construction project, so Dr. Sanders.
Yeah, so it's really started to get exciting because we're starting to fine-tune everything. We recently had a meeting with Skillman and Lancer and went through the budget and identified some items, some aspects of each project that we might send out as alternative bids in order to maintain, staying underneath the budget. This Wednesday, we're going to have what's called a page-turner meeting, and so Misha and others will be here, and it'll be a whole day going through with the different stakeholders, different principals, Vicki, and just going through item by item, making sure, page by page, making sure that everybody's on the same page as we start to narrow things down to go out for bid. And tonight, we have Misha here from Lancer, and he's going to share some renderings, and we're looking for some feedback, not necessarily tonight, we would like for you to take a look at these, think about it, and then get back to us with some feedback on these renderings that Misha's going to show you tonight.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, it'll take me just a second to connect to every one of these screens.
Need regularly both for the student activity center and the new preschool.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for having me today. Today, I wanted to share a couple of updates on a couple of the projects, mainly the student activity center as well as the early childhood center. So what we've been working with so far is we've been working with the administration as well as your staff, as well as Skillman Corporation. That one is... Still not coming up. Okay. Yep. All right. So, connect to that as soon as possible, but starting with the student activity center, kind of a rendered floor plan, again, this is the existing edge of the high school with the pool being over here. This is where the, kind of the current outdoor dining area is, so we're extending that into kind of the parking lot of the building. And based on our last conversation, what we talked about is that we really want to maximize the space inside of the student activity center and provide as many courts and playing surfaces as possible. So in doing so, we shrunk down some of the interior spaces and support spaces, saying that those might come in at a later phase of the project. So in terms of the backdoor spaces, we've got kind of the main entrance on the south side with the thought that maybe a more grand entrance will come in on the north side of the building where you have some more available real estate. And then, on the inside of the building, we've got a couple group restrooms as well as a family restroom, a few storage rooms, an office, and a technology closet that will operate this space itself. And then, inside the building, the student activity center, what we have are two wooden cross courts with the main playing court. All three of them have ability to be played both basketball and volleyball on those. We also have some built-in bleachers in the space as well as this kind of multipurpose space over in, on the north side of the building. Let's see if I can try and connect to that other screen again. Am I typing it correctly? Is it ten, two, twenty, zero, nineteen?
Yes.
Okay. Nope, it's not letting me. Ten, twenty, zero. Oh, there it is. Finally. Okay. Perfect. In the multipurpose space, we are actually kind of reimagining and kind of rethinking what that space is. Currently, what we have it designed as is a tennis court-sized space with some batting cages that can come down from the ceiling. In our last meeting with the principal, he suggested what if we don't go with the tennis but more go with the turf area in that space? Maybe that will allow for more sports to be played in that area or practiced in that area. And then, outside of all of that, we've got a walking track with three lanes all around. You can kind of see the interior space of the gym itself. We'll try to match the, your, how you've redone your main gym and the high school, kind of with those colors that kind of very light for the main of the wood court itself, and then a little bit darker stain for the, kind of the main, around to the free throw lines. And then, really going kind of with the school colors, kind of going with some dark blacks, whites, and then some red accents around the building itself. And then also providing a little bit of a school signage similar to what you have at the football stadium that stampede, kind of painted on the wall of the building. And then, on the outside of the building, what we really wanted to do is really try to make this building belong with the kind of limestone look of it, but also make it new and exciting with some red accents around it. So looking at the building, creating these vertical lines, but again, the texture, we'd like to see if we can match the, kind of the color and the tone of the limestone that the rest of your building has. Got some vertical windows kind of marching through the building, creating that nice rhythm of windows. Something that I forgot to mention inside the building is that we will have a overhead door into the, leading into the student activity center for any deliveries, especially kind of, we're thinking about if you need to take some of the roll out, dip-and-roll bleachers out of the pool, and would like for any events to put them into the gym space itself. This might be the easiest way to do that just because of kind of how bulky the bleachers are. And kind of looking at the main entrance, and we're looking at, not saying kind of both the entrance into the pool area as well as the student activity center. Again, trying to create some signage around the building and create a little bit more interest there. The back of the building, we're again, kind of waiting for the, the, I guess, the, whatever you will decide to do in the future in terms of whether or not you will put some locker rooms or grand entrance or other things in that space over here. That's why we don't, we're not putting windows on that side just in case that is going to be a tall volume or too much signage on that space, but really is still creating those precast panels that look like limestone and creating some red accents on that face as well.
The auxiliary gym is where the, that's from, right there.
Yes.
So that's cafeteria.
That will be, yes. So this is going to be mainly the kitchen space itself.
Where's the cafeteria apart?
So the cafeteria is actually extending now into what used to be the kitchen space. So instead of extending into the gym space, it's extending into the, where the kitchen is. What we've looked at is kind of reshuffling some spaces and making sure.
I thought it was coming out in the kitchen.
Originally, that's...
It was current cafeteria, then it's moving into, growing into the auxiliary gym, so it will be that.
Well, I thought you said it would be kitchen. It's going to be kitchen.
Okay, so I've got a floor plan.
No, the auxiliary gym. Is kitchen going to be in the auxiliary?
Yes.
The whole, the whole kitchen?
Not the whole kitchen.
Okay, okay. That's right.
Right. So this whole gray box is the, what is currently the auxiliary gym. The kitchen space itself is taking all of this space here. And then, we've got a classroom space as well as a electrical mechanical closet that will also have some free space that potentially could be used for school maintenance staff. And then, the cafeteria itself, so this is your current cafeteria and then expanding it into the kitchen space itself, so really taking advantage of the current serving line area here as well as extending it down into here.
So that's changing to, originally, it's supposed to go to the original.
Right. Originally, kind of the expansion to the cafeteria was going to be kind of in this space here, but kind of talking with the staff and thinking about the visibility and how easy it is to observe, we thought that's kind of having it go more kind of in this direction would be easier to make sure that all the students are visible in that space.
Was the capacity in the past...
On the...
Eating capacity?
Sorry, I haven't answered that question. I believe what we were looking at is trying to go into two periods, so that would be four hundred students in there.
It has the capacity that the goals that they would be eating out of common. Right. It has the capacity...
To fit our students in the cafeteria, which we do not currently have, and creates great light sightlines of supervision for the people that are in there as well.
Yeah. I knew that. Our whole...
I was curious what we got there.
There's a, I'm going to add on to, that's for the kitchen, the overhead door somewhere there, right? For deliveries?
Actually, talking to Vicki, she did not want an overhead door, she wanted a man door, kind of a larger...
Is that there then?
Yes, that's right here, and then so...
The outside door.
Dan, Jimmy, and Brad. Can you see it on this TV now? You might, you might come back to your seat, so this TV's a little bigger to hear your questions.
So that door is probably not the, the current...
Yes. That's, that's correct.
So that would be, that door would be a double door, we'd take the post out and all that?
Vicki said she did not want a double door, she just wants a single door in there. She didn't want to deal with the movable mullions or anything else like that.
Really?
Okay, all right.
And that's why we have a page-turn with people, just to confirm a few of those things.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just, yeah.
Yep.
Because you're taking supply, you're bringing in loads of stuff.
Yes.
So it's not going to be a door like that?
No.
It's going to be a single?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Originally, we didn't talk about double doors and overhead doors.
That's what I thought, yeah.
But through design, it was kind of settled on single door. Any other questions or anything else you would like to see before we move to the early childhood center?
Curious about the expansion of use of the multipurpose floor, that you could get more with it out of turf than out of a more multipurpose material. What was the justification for that?
I think maybe not more sports, but baseball, more true for baseball to use that, that different kind of a surface. Football, soccer, some of those more events that are played on grass. But this is why we're asking for your input, because that is a little bit of a change from what we've been talking about. We've been talking about that area being tennis courts, but being able to bring down baseball nets for practicing indoor baseball. So I would like to see what you're, as a board, which of those ideas that you like better. Maybe not necessarily tonight, you're welcome to, but am I explaining that right, Misha and Matt?
Topic of conversation, it was an idea that was brought up as something for consideration as be further talked about, and that's why we, when we talked about it kind of in emails this week, was that was something that needed to be discussed with the board again because part of the origination of where we're at now had to do with original, some board input as well about some of the thoughts of what that, that extra court space would look like. So that's why we said, okay, let's look at these two options, and let's look at the pros and cons of both so that we can make a well-educated decision on that prior to anything ever being bid out, so.
I'll think about it more, but my initial thoughts are, it doesn't matter what the surface is for batting cages, whether it's softball or baseball, I can't imagine them actually in that small of a space running drills, you know, off the bat or something like that. So I don't, and same with, with soccer, it's just not that big of a space to do that kind of thing in. I think if it's multipurpose, you know, they could do calisthenics, they could do, you know, different types of, I don't know, exercises and things like that, and use that space, and anybody could do that. So plus, you could have baseball and softball batting cages, and plus, you can have the tennis court. But, you know, I don't see where you're getting any more sports using it as much as you're, it's being converted over more for baseball and softball. I just don't see, I'd love somebody to be able to let me know what advantage it is.
Coaches wanted, wanted that.
There was an idea that... Brought forward during our meeting this past week, it's something to consider. It's not anything that, it's not anything that we're like, you know, a mile down the road on already, it's more so of an idea that was brought forward.
I'd like to hear their arguments for it.
So when you say turf, I presume we're talking like an astroturf, fairly hard?
One that has that granular feel, just because...
Okay.
Talking with the suppliers of the flooring, that's not going to work well with a wood or floor.
But it would be a pretty solid base. I mean, we'd be talking about a hard floor.
Somewhat. So the way that we have it currently designed is that you have the same type of sleeper system and bounciness across the whole thing, the same sleeper system underneath the wood floor as you have underneath the multipurpose room floor. So that system is going to be under the turf itself as well, so you will have a little bit of a give there. It's not going to be kind of a true cushion floor, but it will have bounciness of the athletic flooring.
Surface is going to be the, is going to be key for whatever it ends up being, how flexible will it be?
That's what I felt like, it was something that just needed to be a bigger topic of discussion before we ever made a change like that, so it just makes sense to talk about the pros and cons of either one and what that would look like, just so that everybody's on the same page as far as what we want prior to it ever going out to bid.
I was apprehensive on, to be honest with you, I was apprehensive on changing this because I felt like we were too far down the path to consider a change like that. Now, the reason why we're still bringing it to you is that financially, it's a wash, right, Misha?
That's what I was hoping to say.
But, like I said, it's a little, it's a little bit of a change, and we wanted to know what the board thought about that.
Right now, Misha, wait a second. Originally, the floor where the track's at, the rubber, the rubber surface, is the same, it's on that third court, it's all the same, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We're trying to avoid...
I mean, I don't, I'm agree with Dane and Jimmy, I don't see, I mean, I'd like to see what the material looks like.
I would too.
Number one, you get the cleanup. I mean, I was just thinking about it all the weekend, this place was a circus with the wrestling, WIC, those kids were everywhere, but it was very well-used. But then I started thinking about other, besides just sports, like you got your, your marching band could be in there, your collar guard and so forth, that, that other... That, that other stuff I don't think would work as well. Correct, it's just like, yeah, because I was thinking, I was gonna flip it the other way, make the whole thing rubber. Get rid of the wood floor, just do the whole thing rubber. That's, that's a true activity center, it could be used for about anything like that. But I'll probably be the odd man out on that one. Yeah, I'm just thinking how much more use you could get out of that, but then you worry about kids getting hurt and everything else, so, yeah.
Okay, sounds great. And then the other piece I want to talk about today is the early childhood center. I don't believe there have been too many changes from the last time we've talked about, but I'll still walk through the plan itself. So the front doors of the early childhood center are here with the reception and secure vestibule being in this area here. Few offices, conference room, break room, and clinic are all concentrated in this area here. And then going down the corridor, that's where we've got the three and four-year-old classrooms here with a in-between space that consists of a storage and a gang restroom here, consisting of three fixtures each. And then a small sink in the restroom itself, but the majority of the hand washing, talking to Heather, is going to be done inside the classroom itself, so it can be observed. And also so that if they're doing any messy activities inside the classroom, they've got the sinks right there, they don't have to go into the bathroom itself. And then in the classrooms themselves, they've got a wall of casework with a fridge, stove, and the sink itself, so that's for, either for any projects or a small type of food prep. I mean, it's not gonna be a big one, more like possible snacks that might happen in the classroom. And then you see in these little bump outs here, they are what we're calling little reading nooks and they're really to create a little bit more interest and fun on the outside of the building as well as creating some sort of difference space on the inside of the building. And again, not forgetting that it is a space for smaller kids and kind of creating that little bit more excitement.
And the gray, between the bathrooms and the hallway? I couldn't read it.
Are you talking about, oh, these ones here? So we've got some general storage as well as staff restrooms in these areas. The end of the hallway is where we've got a mechanical room. And then move in towards the center of the building, that's where we've got a special education department with a kind of occupational therapist and speech as well as a calm down room in this area. We also have a group restroom here, it's open to the hallways. It's kind of open on both sides so that again, a teacher can stand here and observe, kind of making sure kind of what's happening inside of these spaces is kind of everything that's supposed to be happening. And then kids would come out and wash their hands next to the corridor itself. Also have a media center, multipurpose room space, so that space, that's kind of almost like a library-like, but at this age you don't have a library, but that's where you would take your kids for storytime or to kind of create a little bit of a different setting for your class that day. We also have some general storage that will be beneficial to have on your way towards the playground areas here as well as another staff restroom and the general closet. And then further down the hallway, this is where we've got the daycare component with infants, ones and twos in this space. And ones and twos are pretty much a mirror copy of each other, with infants being a little bit different that they do not have a in-classroom restroom, but instead we have a drop-off area for the car seats in that space. But inside the classroom, we've got a few cubbies as well as some space for changing, storage space, washer and dryer in each one of the classrooms as well as some, a little bit of a desk space for the teachers themselves. And then we have a little bit of a food prep area here where we've got a fridge and a sink and a space for microwave in there as well. Ones and twos are also getting a hand washing sink for the little ones on these walls here. These walls are actually half-height walls so that if a teacher is changing a student, they can still observe everything that's happening in that space here. And then these doors will lead you into the playground area that's dedicated to the daycare component itself. And then on the south side of the building, we have the activity center and a cafeteria space separated by a folding partition wall so that during special events, you can open up that whole space and have one large open space. And then we've got a kitchen space with the outdoor access over here. Outdoor access for the kitchen, yes. One of the, kind of the more costly or more designed spaces that we have proposed is that main entry space here, and that's what you see here. So really kind of creating a little bit more fun with the ceilings, kind of creating clouds, painting the structure blue, so it really creates that space. I think that's, this is just kind of an artistic rendering of a mural, but that would be coming later, kind of as you guys have done a few murals yourselves, so that will be kind of part of your responsibility. And then trying to really think about the materials themselves and going with, even though these materials are kind of your commercial materials, but going with more of a woodgrain looks in some of the spaces so they look a little bit more residential again to kind of thinking about the smaller kids and how they interact with spaces and what they're used to. And then for the exterior of the building, we actually have a few options that we've been working with and I can kind of run through them really quickly and then we can go into some of them. So what we were working with primarily is really trying to create this building that's new and exciting, but still trying to relate to your primary school addition here through the use of similar brick colors themselves, but also adding a few notes of green in there as that's the color of the early childhood center itself. So this option here is really looking at creating all of the masonry components of the building and matching them to your, kind of that reddish-brownish brick that you see on the primary and intermediate schools themselves. And then making these reading nooks stand out again to create that little bit more sense of fun to the building and highlighting the entrance itself. And that's also kind of where you have space for some signage to put on the building itself. Which one, the gray one or the green one? So these are metal. Right, so we were kind of thinking about how the parents would come in through this drive and that's the face that you see first is the early childhood center.
We have some signage at the road maybe? Is that the plan?
Doing some research on is looking at some, some electronic signage and different signage like that. One of the things that we've heard from the community members and different people is that there needs to be a little bit more signage and stuff so that people kind of know where to be directed to the fronts and, and different things like that for the buildings. So that is something that we do want to do at the, up by the road is some, some more visible electronic light-up signing that helps direct people where to go.
Left on the brick part, maybe there could be signage that could be seen from the road to the left of that where those three blue windows are above it on the brick.
A little bit far from the road. Tree line here.
It's not something you're gonna be able to see anyway, I guess, because it sits back, okay, I get it now, I get it.
But we can switch kind of where the lettering goes and if we wanted to put it here and then just leave the, just the logo on that side, that's definitely is something that's easy change and...
The fence row that is currently there is in the trees, is that still gonna be there? Is that coming down?
All the brush and everything that was up by the road, because it was creating some safety site issues as people left the preschool. But right now, that, that, those trees are still there. I would imagine as we're going through this process, we'll probably determine whether or not that needs to just come down altogether. But right now...
The road though, you're talking about?
There's like a line kind of about that in-between mark.
Yeah, because right now you really can't see where the building's gonna be.
That the other day, and I think we want that out.
Security purposes too.
Okay, a different concept that's, we're looking at is what if we take just the light brick itself and kind of same concept, same green, but instead to make it a little bit lighter and a little bit more playful itself. Another concept that we had was to these, kind of remove all the green from these pop-outs and really just put that light brick in these areas. And also right by the entrance piece, so that buff brick is there and then just the dark brick as the background color itself. And then the last one is, we worked with the administration a little bit on Friday, is kind of taking that lighter concept, but bringing in a little bit more of that dark brick into it. So kind of that mechanical room and the kitchen itself, creating kind of the balance on the each side and then putting a wainscot of darker brick around the building, but highlighting the front entrance as just the light brick itself.
EPS and see what that looks like from the outside, I gotta remember, okay, okay, I couldn't remember.
This is a cool feature that we've never had before. So like last, our meeting last Friday morning with Misha's help, we were playing around with that. And right on the spot, he was able to say, well, let's, let's put some bricks across the bottom and see what that looks like. And so we just kept playing with it and I, I think we're getting closer. I'm not sure we're completely there, but we're getting closer to, to something we like and, and so I just really appreciate this feature that Lancer offers us.
Thoughts from the board about which ones you liked or which ones sometimes are more important, which ones you didn't like? This one? This one?
Yeah, that looks good too, yeah.
Or kind of...
Because, yeah, I think it's important, but other than that, I, I could, more or less brick, I'm not...
So EPS and EIS have brick just on the lower part.
Well, yeah.
But of course then the extension varies from that too.
That is exactly what the extension looks like. Is that pretty close? So is it possibly with your computer, because you can do anything it looks like?
Sure.
This is, sounds like a silly thing, but is there a way to take the trash and put it in the back somehow? Sit in the front, you got the trash right on the left side of the front of the building, yeah.
Right, so this is your trash enclosure?
So no, all the trash from the other buildings is in behind on all the other buildings, I didn't...
I think that's, that's kind of an interesting thought. We're still working with the fire department in terms of what they will require us to do in terms of the access to the back of the building. I think that's can help us determine kind of how a trash truck can access it. I think early on we tried to limit how much drive we're putting in just to preserve the budget of the building. That's why the trash was here so that trash truck can come in and load and unload and then leave, but yes.
At EPS and EIS, you see the trash.
Yeah.
Because, because it's on the back of the building, so when you drive back there, you see it. But on something like this, you wouldn't see it at all because you won't be to the left of it.
Unless you're driving a tractor.
Unless you're driving a tractor.
Yes.
It's not gonna be on that concrete pad then, right there?
No, this is the, the enclosure for it, brick enclosure with some gates on it.
Yeah, that, that helps.
On that pad, okay.
So board, do you like, I'm sensing you like the red brick better. But around the windows, do you like the green or the beige, whatever that is?
I'd kind of like for it to match you the building.
I would kind of like to see it, as, as far as the red brick and the lighter color be matching to the other buildings. So it's continu- contiguous, but yet different. I'm not sure, that's a lot of red, if it's better to do the wainscot or do that, I, I have no idea on those two. I, I think either one would be fine. The wainscoating kind of brings it back to EPS, EIS, but the red brick does set it off as something different. But is it too dark? And not, like you said, that as far as the lighter colors were welcoming or whatever. So, so maybe I'll lean toward the third a little bit more, but...
Where we also direct people to say, this is a lighter brick, this is the welcoming, you go there for the front door. The rest of it is darker, meaning don't go there.
What's green?
Green, those will be metal panels.
Okay, that's green, all right. Just another shade of tan to me, so.
The left of the front entrance in the, where was the cafeteria?
Yes.
Is that gonna be like a drop-down curtain between those two or what do you, what type of a divider are you gonna be thinking about?
It's the court, not necessarily accordion style, but they're three to four foot folding partitions that you kind of come out, they're hinged, they usually come in pairs so that, and then they lock into place.
Right, that's what we have between gym and cafeteria at the high school now? Those type of doors? Okay. We have at EIS too, don't we, and EPS on the stage, don't they have doors?
Yep, okay, yep, so something along these lines. I think that might be it for me, unless there are any more questions or comments about anything you've seen or haven't seen so far? Yes. Yes.
Bunch of questions.
Okay.
I'm going to be, I'm going to be.
And then on Thursday, I'll be here in the morning, meeting with the town.
What is it, the, the, for the preschool, how many students is it designed for? Maximum students? And how many, how much maximum did they care?
So I believe we are looking at 200 students at the Early Childhood Center and I believe up to 30 or 24 in the daycare components. Keep on forgetting whether it's eight or 10.
Might be 36, but we'd have to double check some of those components because there's staffing ratios and then the different age levels have different ratios.
Is 30 the limit?
Yeah, just depend, it depends on the ratio of the staffing and how many kids you can have per staff member because of the level of care that's required for that age. So.
Right. I think that's, it might be kind of one child per, sorry, one adult per four kids, something like that. So that gets pretty crowded pretty quickly with adults if, well, I think in one of the, we went and visited Westfield Daycare Facility and we saw that one of the adults left and then there was one adult that was in the room with four kids on her pretty much. That looked like a lot. Yeah, kind of right there and then a couple ones.
I will not be applying for that job.
Thank you very much, Misha.
Thank you.
Great work that you guys do. Thank you. Just trying to see if I needed a breaker. We could get through this. What's that? He's, okay.
Page turn meetings on Wednesday. That's tomorrow.
Right, right. Okay, anything further? Okay. Next is consideration to approve the recurring transfer resolution. Mr. Irwin.
So every year, we transfer a amount of dollars from the education fund into the operations fund to support the staff and personnel that are funded out of operations. Our levy alone from operations fund does not support the entire fund. And so this was something that was a known factor when the state, back in 2019, made some of the changes away from just the general fund to the education fund, operations fund. And so they started to change that stuff around. The state set a requirement that we are to transfer no more than 15% from our education fund to our operations fund. And so that's kind of the marker. So it's 15% of all revenue into the education fund, not just tuition support, all revenue into the education fund. Whatever 15% of that is kind of that threshold, they say, do not exceed this. There are school corporations that do exceed it for certain reasons. And if, what it kind of essentially does, if you were to do that, it puts you on some sort of watch list that they're coming in and asking you why that's going on, what's, what's going on and what you're doing to, to get away from that in the future. We're not in that situation. We're consistently around 11, 12%. So the resolution is an up to amount. The whole point is to not have to come back to you and say, hey, want to update this again? Hey, want to update this again? We've been pretty, if you go back and look at our cash flows and what it is that we project out to you, been pretty consistent with that for the last number of years. And so we set that up to amount in the resolution. You'll see in the cash flows kind of what the plan is at this point. But again, this past year, we were at 12%. So we're not, we're not close to that line of the 15 as it compares to in total dollars. And so that's what I'm asking for is to approve the up to amount in, in the, in the packet. So the up to amount that we set for this is based on an estimate. I go in and I estimate kind of what that, that amount of 15% might be or close to amount. And so the up to amount is $3,150,000 in the recurring resolution.
Okay. Do we have motion?
The recurring transfer resolution up to 3.15 million.
Moved and seconded. I remember when we first got these funds, we did that a few times, kind of changed the numbers while we're trying to fill out what it was, it was. But yeah, it's pretty consistent now. So that's good. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have permission to void corporation and ECA checks older than two years. Our annual duty to do this.
This is just regular business, following board policy. That is the ask of the board to void corporation and ECA, and ECA. So this is corporation and ECA checks that are two years old or more as of December 31 of 2023. Again, this is routine business and it's in alignment with board policies as well. So asking for your permission on that.
Good second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. The consideration to approve the Boys and Girls Club lease, that is being tabled. Not that there's any issues, but it's just contract language that we're, lease language that we're working on. You know, interns companies get involved and so they all want to see different things. So it's just technical things like that. There's no issue with, with having that lease. So just wanted to make sure you knew that. Next, consideration to approve the S-Craft Insurance Invoice. Mr. Irwin.
This is our yearly invoice. We pay our, our insurance premiums all at once for the entire year. It's not invoiced monthly. It's all upfront at the beginning of the year. What I put in the board packet was the invoice itself. I also put in there a pricing sheet that comes directly from the trust that we're a part of, that has a breakdown of the financials from last year to this, this year, what the difference is between what last year and this year was, where those increases come from. If you look at our increase, which was about 6.6%, a majority of that factors into the increase in our insurable assess, the value of our properties. This past year, they brought out a third party company to come back and do a reassessment of, of all of our properties and buildings. And so that, much like a lot of other things, raise the price of those and along with more insurable value means your premium goes up. And so that's a part of it. But again, this invoice is for the entire year and covers all insurance coverages that are shown there in the invoices for $420,000, 498.87.
The S-Craft Insurance Invoice.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's consideration to approve the IU School of Nursing Agreement, and we'll turn to Dr. Sanders for that.
Yes, so this is an agreement with Indiana University School of Nursing. It's just permits us to have an opportunity to host nursing students to come into our clinics, work with our students, get familiar how to talk to elementary versus a junior high student. And it's not just treating them for being sick, but it includes promoting healthy habits and preventing illnesses and just health education. So I'd recommend your approval of this agreement with IU.
Have motion?
You, students?
Moved and seconded. Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration to approve the EEECC class offerings for the 24-25 school year. Dr. Sanders.
So every year about this time, we come to the board and Heather Kenzick is usually here, but she couldn't be here tonight. And she would probably do a lot better job explaining the new class offerings. But pretty much it'll stay the same next year, except they'll be offering more options for three-year-olds, where parents of a three-year-old, that maybe the parents want them to be at preschool five days, three days, two days. It just gives parents more options. And what I like about what Heather does is she bases these adjustments from year to year based on parents' input and what they're looking for. She knows if parents are looking for more of a five-day option versus a three-day option. And she makes those adjustments. And I think we have a really great director of the preschool in Heather Kenzick. And then she just wants to continue with the delayed start Wednesday schedule, just like all of our other schools. They utilize that time to work as a collaborative team and work on professional development and just preparing what they're doing to help these children out. And so I recommend your approval.
Do I have motion?
Approval of the EEECC class offerings for 24-25.
Moved and seconded. Any questions, comments? I do appreciate her going off of parent input. That's a perfect way to do that. So appreciate that.
It does every year, but you know, it's not just, oh, I think we'll try this. It's based on her knowledge of what parents actually want to do.
Well, and there was plenty of information in the packet, too, that I understood what she was up to.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now consideration to approve the EEECC rates for the 24-25 school year. Mr. Irwin.
Yes, each year, that's one of the other things that we do when we sit down with preschool director with Heather and we talk about the rates and look at how we compare to other places. As you know, we run the preschool as a service. It's not something that's a money-making endeavor for the school corporation. We subsidize that. And so one of the things that we're very conscious of is, is the quality of programming that we're providing and the affordability of what it is that we're providing as well, because we know the value of a quality preschool education. So right now, our, our four, our, our four-year-olds, the price would stay the same. We would still keep it at $16 a day for half-day daily rate and $32 a day for the full-day rate. But there would be a $3 increase for the full-day daily rate for three-year-olds because you can, you can't have as many three-year-olds in the room when you look at some of the NACI and pass the quality requirements when it comes to staffing levels, as well as there's a little bit more care and possibly diapering, some other things like that that go along with working with students of that age. And it is a very common thing across, across different preschool facilities and daycare facilities. So with that, that little bit of increase, it would equate to a little less than $9,000 in, in total money. But again, those are the, the only change that we'd want to make to the actual rate for the EEECC. So with that, asking for your approval, please.
To accept the EEECC rates for 24-25.
In second. Any questions, comments? Thanks for keeping them stable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's consideration to approve a contingency learning and safety plan. Dr. Sanders.
Yes, so one of the requirements for us to receive ESR funds is we have to get our contingency learning and safety plan approved by the board every six months. You approved this plan back in the summer. There have been no changes to it. We're just meeting this requirement of, of basically reaffirmation of our plan.
Move approval. Moved and seconded. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding with Indiana University.
You, another MOU with Indiana University. If I don't remember back in October, Jennifer Barrett and Amy Winkler presented on the Indiana College Core Program where students will be able to earn credit. This is the memorandum of understanding that enables us to have this partnership with IU. It officially declares IU as our provider for this program. And so I recommend approval of this MOU.
Memorandum of Understanding with IU.
Moved and seconded. This is so important to our high school students. So this is.
I mean, not just academically, because it's going to help prepare students for the rigor of college courses, but also it gets them further down the path. And so I think you're going to see more students graduating because they'll have that jump on being able to finish their college career and they'll have that preparation. It's just an amazing program.
It is. My youngest daughter almost had her freshman year finished by the time she went to IU.
That saves a lot of money.
Yeah, it's awesome. Okay, anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's consideration to approve the resolution that authorized the submission of the 1003 flexibility waiver application. Dr. Sanders.
Yes, so we have, I think this will be the third time we'll be submitting an application. This year, it's working out really well. We basically, the state through the flexibility waiver allows school corporations to waive certain statutes. And the two that we asked to be waived are to be able to track our instructional time by minutes. And by tracking our instructional time by minutes, we could actually shave off two days to students, we could actually probably do three. But so the resolution asks, actually asked for up to three. But this year, we took two. So the students are actually just coming to school 178 days. But because of this waiver, we're tracking our time by minutes and that's why we can do that. So this year, we used one of those flex days in November and we used it for parent teacher conferences and professional development. And then we're going to do, use a second one, which will be on April 8th, the solar eclipse day. And the original plan was for students, obviously not to come to school that day, and, but for teachers to come in and do professional development. But because of what we're learning about the impact the solar eclipse is going to have on our area, that professional development we'll be asking the teachers to do, will be do, be done virtually. And they'll be able to stay home, stay safe, stay out of traffic. So usually, we're asking the state for permission in June or July, but they've moved the timeline up. So I think it's April 5th this year. And we've already had discussions with our principals. We had discussions with our discussions team on what they're looking for, for next year. And so we're going to finalize, fine tune that application. But this resolution gives me permission to submit it.
Do we have motion?
Authorizing the 1003 flexibility waiver.
I'm sorry. I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded. Now, will the teachers, I know they're, you said they'd be doing things virtually or whatever. Now they're going to have time off during the actual eclipse, right? So that they can experience it?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Like I said, the original plan was for the teachers to come in and then we're going to let them go home in time to, to be home to see it. But the way they're telling me about the impact, I don't want them be traveling about. So they're just going to be home and, and there'll be a combination where they'll be able to get on and zoom with their, maybe their grade level teachers or do some planning. It won't be official all day long. They'll be tied up. So we want to do a combination. We want these days to be very meaningful for our teachers.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. On to the superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders.
So the first official board meeting of, of every year, I present these five goals. And to be honest with you, these five goals never change. But hopefully what you see change is, are the bullet points underneath where we're making progress in each of these goals. Goal number one is to continue providing students and staff with a safe school environment. And we have our school safety team that meets on a monthly basis and Matt leads that every month tackling the other new issues that might come up regards to school safety. This year, we added a third school resource officer. We have a very strong mental health team and that's, when we talk about school safety, it, it all. it, it all begins with mental health and we have a very strong mental health team across the corporation. And then we've been researching lately some additional levels of safety. And that's a term we've been using lately because you obviously can't come up with a safety plan that's going to protect you from every possibility. So the, but the more layers you have, the more levels of, that you have in your safety plan, the better you are at keeping everybody as safe as possible. And so we've been looking at different options and we're going to have an executive session on January 24th and, and talk about that as a board and see where you want to go from, from there. The second goal is to continue leading RBB to a position of financial strength and phrase that we'll never stop using as far as I'm superintendent, that's doing business better. And we, every year, we're looking for ways to improve efficiency and targeting areas for potential savings. And then we'll be able to, we use those funds to be able to add a program, reward our teachers and principals with increased salaries. And, and I think you could see from Matt's report every month that we are maintaining healthy, healthy cash flows and rainy day funds. And so I think we're doing pretty well on that goal too. Goal number three is to lead RBB to sustained growth in enrollment. So obviously, we've been talking a lot about the preschool tonight and that's, I think that's where it begins. And we, hopefully, from the, the start, we, we connect with these families and these families who are sending their kids to the preschool feel connected to Edgewood Schools and they're, they're going to be here from preschool through 12th grade. The last fall, we had the Edgewood Showcase to help us not only showcase to our current parents, but also parents who are, might be considering moving into the area. They could come to this showcase and they were able to see all the programs we have going on in, in our different facilities. That was a really special night. And then Brittany Tucker, who's been our, leading our marketing efforts, she's going, in her classes, she's going to be working with students to tell the Edgewood story. And so how cool will that for our students who will be telling others about what great things are happening in Edgewood Schools? Goal number four is to lead RBB into a strong partnership between the school corporation families, families, local businesses and the community. We started last year the Edgewood Business Leaders Advisory Team and we've had one meeting. We have some really key, essential stakeholders throughout the community come in and give us advice on what we're doing to prepare students for the workforce. Of course, our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club continues to grow and also these important partners with the Ellisville Police Department. We met with the police department today to talk about some of the safety measures I mentioned earlier. Invision Ellisville, Chamber of Commerce, the town of Ellisville and, and much more. And then goal number five, to lead RBB into creating an educational environment designed to prepare students to chase their dreams in tomorrow's world. And so these should all be familiar, familiar with you. Professional learning communities, high reliability schools, ready schools, these are all initiatives that help us to reach goal number five. End of report.
All right. Thank you very much. And you are making wonderful progress on all your goals and, and so, and the goals for the corporation. So we appreciate that very much. Next is RBB EA comments and we have Doug Yules is the one.
Quick update. Nine minutes left. Purdue's up 25-15, for those who want to know. So on to other things. Just, just had to put that out there. I really appreciate the quick communication with Snow Days. I don't have kids here, but I'm sure parents appreciated knowing ahead of time, even staff and admin, so we can prepare to the best we can. And sometimes things happen, you got to call Snow Day like this morning, but we at least were already mentally ready for that and even we already know tomorrow with the two-hour delay. So we appreciate getting the word out early. So it's kind of nice. And obviously having E-days probably helped maybe with that, that we can, don't have to stress out about, you know, using a day if we have to. Also, thank you for looking into the flexibility waiver. Dr. Sanders was talking about that. And I appreciate him asking for our opinion, our feedback at our corporation discussion meetings. You know, were these helpful, were they useful? And I've been here a few years and I can go way back, and I'm sure Mr. Demoss can, when years ago, we'd have like six half-days to use for professional development productivity-wise. So, so you know, you live and you learn, but we, I think, almost universally said, having a full day without also managing kids at home like an E-Day, you didn't have to be distracted, just you could be focused on doing one thing. And it wasn't just for a couple hours. So we strongly advocated for, yeah, yeah, having a full day was, you just get more done, plain and simple. So we appreciate that as well. Other than that, I know it's General Assembly time, it's State House, it's not a budget year, but we'll keep an eye on that as well. And again, appreciate all you do for us and stay warm.
Thank you very much. Mr. Demoss, board member comments?
I'm just excited about the construction projects becoming more real as we speak. January weather in Indiana, you get second semester rolling, but it takes a little while. But this is such an important stretch for the educational process for our kids because it's the biggest stretch of time that teachers get to work with them, so. And before you know it, it'll be spring break and standardized testing season, so anyway. But I'm looking forward to the High Reliability Conference here coming up in a couple of weeks and that's all I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Irwin.
Looking forward to that conference as well. I'm always amazed, I came up here this morning to meet with Matt and Jerry on some safety layers, we're calling it. And it's always amazing how well-prepared they are for our meetings and I appreciate your leadership so much. So looking forward to presenting that to us all next, next Wednesday, so, but thank you.
Mr. Tucker.
Hopefully, everybody stays warm and safe tonight and wanted to do kudos to the folks Saturday. I spent about half-day over here Saturday and it was just a zoo with the WIC wrestling. And it was so well organized that they had it done in time to prepare for the basketball game that night, which I was really impressed. So kudos to that, to that crew, Mr. Blan and his group and to the, also host the conference basketball, turned into junior high. So on a pretty blurry day, it was fun to get out and see the kids, so safe travels home tonight.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thanks, cats. This is a cold night and so be safe going, going home. And there is the two-hour delay in the morning, so just to repeat that for people. The executive session, I just wanted to explain for, whenever you're talking about security and safety measures, it, you don't want everybody knowing what those are. And so the state statute cars out the ability for the board to get together with appropriate individuals to discuss different safety measures, things that we can do to, to help keep, keep our students safe. So that's why it's in an executive session format. Again, thanks for coming and everybody stay warm. This meeting's adjourned.